And help teachers, help each other figure out how to work with some of the kids that have been challenging. I, and again, this was a lot to take on last year. And I know a lot of people worked really hard, the administration and the staff. And there is a trajectory change. And I'm not comfortable pulling that rug out and saying we're getting rid of what we just did last year. You know, I think we've had a struggle having consistency in Washington. And this will be the first year they have a consistent, you know, the same associates and the same principal from year to year. And I like having Mike Freeze learning and really figuring out how to spread that. But at the end of the day, my concern is that the Washington students don't just need behavior interventions. They need an education. They need good instruction. They need to succeed academically. They also need to succeed in terms of their social emotional status. And I feel as if there's a combination of resources that are being put into school. The structural changes and then continuing with error in terms of helping coach teachers with really good instructional techniques. And that's probably the reason why I'm going to be supporting moving on for continuing the contract for one more year.
So I'm going to stick with what I know because that's how I need to operate on this. And what is that? I know that three out of nine goals set objectives, goals were not met. And so when I look at that, I think about, to me, that's not, that might be good enough for some in this room. But I'm not really interested in good enough at this point. I think our kids, our community deserves the best that we can do. I also have to wonder about what's the incentive for AIR to actually improve? If they can literally come into this situation, make $30,000 a month and meet three out of nine goals. I just don't, that's unclear to me how anybody thinks that's a good idea. I think it's very obvious that staff is not buying in to this plan. It might be anecdotal, but I'm not going to discount all the voices that were comfortable enough and courageous enough to reach out to me this past year from the school building. Considerable amount of people as well as other citizens and staff from other buildings as well. I do appreciate the conversation around looking into the culture and climate plans around CHAMP and other things that are in place for the schools and Franklin as well. But to the point of the schools coming into, the feeder schools coming into Washington Middle School and Franklin for that matter. Think of what we could do. We don't, we don't need AIR to actually invest in the culture and climate of the building. I just don't believe we do. And I'm sorry, now a lot of staff doesn't believe that as well because I haven't heard from them. But it's also, first of all, how do we know that this is actually the, you know, the three goals that were met out of nine? How do we know that that's not, how do we know it's attributed to AIR? We don't really know it's attributed to AIR. Maybe these teachers actually were able to just do that on their own. I think it's a very slippery slope to think that we cannot trust our teaching staff to do the job of academics. That's why we hired them. And frankly, that's why we have a considerable amount of administration with high level of education as well. I think there was a comment made, many of us in this room have run schools. We have that in this room. We have that in this district. When you have an outside entity who's coming in, collecting a very nice paycheck and isn't meeting the goals, not even half of the goals, and we're still willing to continue working with them. Then we do have to start thinking about, if we do have that many people in this district who have run schools and we have to go outside of that, that's a whole nother conversation. But more importantly, my vote's going to reflect what I know. I know three out of nine goals were not met. I will honor the parents, the staff in the school as well as the staff outside of the school who have continued to reach out to me and especially in the last month. I would also say that Sullivan, Howe, all of the other schools that are in play, that are feeder schools into our middle schools. Think of what we could do with this $216,000 in those schools. We have a lot of ideas for Washington Middle School with Boys and Girls Club and things that were mentioned, but what about the other schools? I mean, you're going to spread the rest of that, I think it was $70,000 across, but at the end of the day, that doesn't really, it doesn't, it sounds good, but it doesn't really add up to much. So I think personally, as a person who is in charge of essentially spending tax dollars, if this was something, if this, I keep relating to this, but if this was in another department or if this was your home budget, you hired a contractor to come in and fix nine things of your home, your, you know, your roof, your floors, your, you know, infrastructure of your storm sewer, and you gave them, they were paid $30,000 a month to take care of all this. But they only finished three out of nine objectives that you had agreed, together agreed by the way, to me. I cannot imagine that you would turn around and look them in the eyes and say, you know what? Here's another $200,000. Let's see what we can do with that. You've already shown me that I can't, I cannot rely. I am not comfortable enough to believe that this is possible. It's just not there. The information's not there.
Christina, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'll try to be brief. I'll try to be brief. I know this has gone on for a long time. I just want to thank the community members that reached out to me. I talked to parents and teachers and principals and social workers and counselors. Over 26 people. It has been a busy couple days getting back to everybody. And I just, let me say too that none of those people were supportive of this. I'm not saying that's representative, but I just found that to be fascinating. Again, those are just people I spoke with. To me, the question isn't, do we need a deeper investment? We do. The question isn't, should we be more courageous in our decision making? We should. And the question isn't, you know, do staff need more additional support structures? They do. We also know that just hiring our staff isn't going to solve our, you know, concerns and address the whole child because just hiring more staff isn't the answer. To me, the question is, how do we ensure that our investment connects in our community in a sustainable way that we know is based on the evidence of effectiveness? And I think the letter that I read from Andy Austin tonight talks a little bit about the expertise and the passion and the skill set that we have in this community. So for me, I think that I haven't seen any data, in my individual opinion, that clearly demonstrates that the money spent with AIR indicates that that work was linked directly to the outcomes that we see even of the three out of the nine. I just don't see that. I think that Washington Middle School and their staff and their families should be absolutely applauded for their time and their deep intensive work. I know it's been a stressful year and they've really dedicated themselves to their students. I know Cindy has done, you know, she's a leader there. I applaud the work that you guys are doing here. It's not about, I don't look at the three out of nine and think, oh, it's a failure on the teachers or it's a failure on leadership. I think, for me, it's a step back to say, how can we ensure that what we're doing is worth the time and the money and the investment so that we are going to get the greatest results? And for the data that I see with AIR, I just don't see that connection for me personally. So that's kind of where I am, where I am right now.
So my quality green Bay Public School District Education taught me that experiments, in order to be effective, you have to limit the variables you measure to see what's impacting change. And unfortunately, school turnaround is a hard process. It's not a science. There's a lot of art to it. And in conversations that I've had with administrators, sometimes that can take up to seven years. And when the school board was faced with the decision, they felt like we didn't have seven years. We needed to invest in that much sooner. AIR was brought in to accelerate that turnaround process. And similar to what Christina just said, I feel like the results are mixed. And we did do a lot as a school board and as an administrative team to invest in Washington outside of AIR. And then I look to what our plans are for next year. I mean, simply bringing a principal back for a second year is an improvement. That's something that we haven't been able to say. I sat down with Cindy Olson and got to talk with her and see her investment and her passion for Washington. I frankly think that's part of how Washington got to where it was because we didn't have that consistent leadership. In thinking about the AIR proposal the first time that we got it, got in June, you know, one of the ideas that I had for a suggestion would be to, well, what if we cut back AIR, the teachers, and invested more in Cindy as our instructional leader, as a learning leader? And what I've come to learn after is that, you know, Cindy said she would actually go the other way. And Judy, she attributed a lot of her success and growth this past year to you and the leadership and support that you provided. And I thought that that was really powerful. I love the ability for us to grow our leaders and grow our capacity. And I want to see Cindy to continue to grow in that role. But also wanted to make sure Judy, I appreciate your leadership in this process and certainly John, yours as well. I looked at the manager of student engagement, attendance and efficacy. I think that is a tremendous solution. And I personally know both Dwight Hancock and Jason Thomas at Franklin. And I think that they will do a wonderful job in their roles. I looked at the schedule that Cindy had up in her office that showed the looping structure. And I asked Cindy what would happen if I just messed it all up. And she threatened to do some things to me. I won't repeat here. Yes, yeah, she said I shouldn't do that. So, but I think that looping structure in seven, eight, seven, eight, three is going to make tremendous difference for our kids and their experience day to day and their adult connections. I mean, I'd be fascinated to see those survey results. You know, the behavior coach, again, tremendous, tremendous idea. The idea that we're going to take one of our strongest administrators, our executive director of secondary teaching and learning, and apply him to those two schools. When I think about the investment that that is, that's tremendous. Not only in his time, but also in the lack of investment in other areas that he could be helping to lead our district. So when I look at the success that we've had at Washington, I can't definitively say that it was because of AIR. I can pretty definitively say it's because of the talented and amazing people that we have in our district. And because of that, I cannot comfortably support AIR. This is something that I've talked to a lot of people and I've lost a lot of sleep over. This is a really hard decision. It's a battle between my head and my heart. But ultimately, I'm minimal with my heart and not, and not supportive.
So I've spent a lot of time with people in conversation about this as well. I've spent time with Cindy. She's a terrific leader. And I talked to support staff and teachers. And I get anecdotal feedback also from, you know, parents and grandparents. You know, we promised, we promised this school some continuity. We promised that we would, you know, give them the support they needed. We promised this community. And I can't imagine at this point just throwing up our hands and saying, well, we gave it a year with a brand new principal. And it's not good enough, so we're going to just stop, minstrel and try something else. What would that be exactly? What's Plan B? Because there is a Plan B. So, you know, some of the universal things that I've heard from people are Cindy's terrific. She's a, she's a great, she's been a great hire. She herself said the same thing about you, Judy, that you've been a huge support to her. And she has told me that AIR has been a huge support to her and her staff. I think it's been money well spent. She thinks so, and she's the leader of that school, and I trust her. Let's see here. The other universal thing that I've heard from all these people is that this school is fully staffed. I asked everybody, do you need more people? Do you need more support? What do you need as far as personnel? And all of them said, no, we're good. Good with the amount of people that we have right now. That's important to me that they feel like they have staff. It's really important that for the first time in years, they're going to have the same admin team go into the next year all together. There won't be anybody to ramp up. There isn't going to be anyone who needs, you know, a lot of professional development to get integrated into our school district. That is really important. But the big thing I took away is that they trust Cindy. They trust her leadership. I think about what it was like a year ago when she came before us to be hired and what a horrible length that was. And how she's kind of came through that and has been proving herself every day in that school. You talk to her and she just loves that school. She loves the students. And so when she tells me that she wants another year of support, and not for herself, she feels like she's got what she needs now, but she wants it for her staff, I believe her. And the teachers that I've talked to have said they would like more support with behaviors. So I believe them as well. They are doing that work every day. That school has done everything we've asked of them. And I am not going to take that support away from them now, so I'll be going to ask.
I had the same conversation with Laura and a similar conversation as Eric did with Cindy. And it was the most compelling part of that conversation was how much of her success she does attribute to AIR. Public comment disconcerting, but you had some clarification. I really think, I trust Cindy Olson. And I think I need to support her. What she sees as something that is going to help her continue to turn Washington around. And I would always say three out of six, I'm going to hide it, three out of nine, three out of nine. But the 97% is really close to 100%, but it's not 100%, so it wasn't a complete pass. I just think it's important to, if a school leader tells you that something is working and really helped her, to like that help to continue for her staff. I have a hard time not supporting that.
So I, I too have done my own research and looked into this issue. And I've asked about AIR frequently since they've been in place. I've gone to Washington many times. I've asked people and the staff that I talked to felt that they were benefiting from AIR, that they were getting real positives they couldn't use in their classrooms. And it was, there were, there was maybe, it was different degrees of positive. I heard no, I heard no negatives. Yeah, when I visited Washington, I had a couple of comments with an email that were against AIR. But what I looked at also, my concerns going into this, when I was wondering what an AIR proposal would look like for this year, is what happens next? What's, what's different? Or how are we taking in the input that we've received here? And I think there's, there's two important things that I look at here. First of all, this is, this proposal is clear in the wording of the motion that this would be, this would be the second year of TWO. And we're wondering when the, when does the release of responsibility happens? It happens over the course of this year. As we put more people into place, as we have more, more people drawing on AIR's research to become the train the trainers. It is taking away the question of, because I did, I did worry, and I believe I said this when we first, when we first went with AIR, and I wanted to only authorize one year because I wanted to see where things went. I didn't want to get into a long-term commitment. But I also knew that we probably wouldn't be done after one year. I think when you look at goals, if you have, there's pros and cons to having a 100% goal. There's, you're setting a target, you're setting an objective, but if one thing goes wrong ever, you can never recover that goal. So I look, I do look at that differently. I look at, I look at the overall progress and I keep, I keep coming back to my mind to teachers and staff that I talked to randomly walking around the building. If, if I bumped into all people who are members of the AIR fan club, I certainly did it accidentally. People talk about real strategies that they're using in their classrooms. I too looked at, okay, what about, what about the fact that we have, we have staff here that have turned around schools? And they, they have. But everyone that I've talked to who's done it has said that there's, they did it. They would be capable of doing it, but also their knowledge isn't, their knowledge of what's going on right now running a building is not the same. It's different. We have different circumstances here. And I do, I do want to get some clarification just to make sure that I'm understanding correctly how, what options there will be for other schools, not just Franklin to benefit from AIR, but how we're going to spread that further. Because that too is important, is all this money going into just Washington. And I did, I did receive a, you know, a comment about that. Where does that leave other schools? And if we didn't have a plan to have a meaningful amount of participation of other schools into getting some of what AIR is doing, I wouldn't be able to support this. If this was an open-ended commitment that didn't make it clear that this was year two of a two-year project with the release of responsibility, I wouldn't be able to, to support the project either. But given that those things are there, although I, I think maybe I do just need to hear a little bit more about some of the concerns of the gentleman from BWGB because some of those are serious and they're new information that I didn't have before tonight. So given that, given that this becomes year two of TWO, and given, given that it's something that Cindy herself thinks is beneficial and helping in her school, I think containing this for one more year is the right thing to do. But I, before, before we take that vote, I guess I would just like to briefly review beyond Franklin, how other schools will directly participate in this? And also if you have any, any answers to, besides the fact that yes, AIR worked on other projects that share our district's values. Okay, that's great. But if AIR has a, I need to know more about this and I would, perhaps that would require a delay of a week to get that. I haven't made that motion yet, but those would be my questions.
So in looking at, in looking at how are we going to share the turnaround practices, there are quite a few practices that we've already implemented. And you've heard quite often about, and you've commented on some of the solid, good hires that we've made. The hiring process, particularly for administrators, was changed through the AIR training and process that we went through. And it was meant as a systems-changing piece. And many of the high-quality administrators that we've hired in the past year plus have been part of that process, including the person at my, my right.
I'm sorry, but it, those are, and we've got, yes, there are some good transferable things we already got. But we're really looking at if part of a rationale for continuing next year is bringing new things next year broad or that's specifically what I'm looking to.
Sure. And the reason why I was explaining was because I wanted to make sure that we were showing, that we had examples of showing that we're applying knowledge to systems-changing practice based on prior training. And that we will do the same with additional training that we will be receiving. So we will be working on training of our district office individuals who are responsible for supporting schools so that the supervising executive directors and our curriculum people really understand what are the, what are the essential learnings that have come through the AIR process and the turnaround practices that are, that are utilized there. We'll also be giving practice and informational training to our principals as a whole with a greater focus for our DSSA identified schools. So that would happen throughout the school year. We are still looking at what that part of the work with AIR would be. We have not put together with AIR the definitive contract for that work, but it is definitely something that they have done and something that they've done with, with great effect. When I think about, why will AIR work with us this, this coming year? They have a variety of other districts with very similar needs, similar concerns that, that want their business and the demand for such services. Park seats the supply of individuals that can offer those turnaround services. So we are working with them to make sure that they still want to work with us. And I believe that they, they do want to work with us in those practices. But when we think about the job embedded nature of what our support looks like, it's not that we necessarily have our principals sit down for a class. It's work that's done with our executive director who supervises schools. It's done with Mike Freeze who works with our curriculum along with the team from the teaching and learning department to take the lessons and apply them throughout the work that we do. Just as an example, looking at the scope and sequence of particular courses and making sure that instruction, instructional objectives that are going to be assessed for the forward exam and other assessments, that we're accomplishing that teaching before we're asking students to identify what they know within, within that subject area. That's, that's an important area as well as looking at the four domains of turnaround practice that we shared quite, quite a few months ago during some of our initial work with, with the board. But that really is the summary of the turnaround practices that will be shared with, with our principals. Eric, you want to?
As, as we think forward to, I know that we've had conversations, AIR is connected as to the National Organization around behavior with a tremendous amount of resources and full analysis of Washington. They would provide, or actually the district MLSS, we talked to them about as well in conversation. So really looking at the systemic, deeper dive into our own behavior efforts around supporting children and the journey around their behavior. The other piece, as we think about the fact, and I appreciate, I absolutely agree that Mike Freeze is a restored year educator, to have him, each of the coaches is to be on site 27 days each, which is significant and according to what I'm reading in the contract. I think that, to me, that's a great opportunity to say, okay, what are we, where are we there? Absolute national experts around best practices pedagogy. And I think to, to the point that we have looked more deeply, recognized the fact that to truly transform, there are some significant changes that we can replicate that are already in play. But as, as a leader and I know an instructional leader for secondary like Mike is and also Nancy, who also support coaching and coaching models, this is a really important opportunity because to be perfectly honest, when I look at sometimes, not all of our coaches are alike if we consider. um, not all of our coaches are alike, if we consider that accurately and that the amount of, of work that's been done and needs to continue to ensure that our coaches are being leveraged the very best that they can, um, I, I believe will be also positive with that. And I, I see that there's a tremendous amount of work that's already been invested. Our teachers are working really hard. So to have the best coaching because they want to through the process and I know they've done their extraordinary job, but to be able to, to look at what's going on in the nation and that as well, very helpful.
I'll just quickly add to, going back to the comment that Christine made earlier in the presentation too, I mean, it's good to hear teacher voice as well. So teachers who are working directly with those coaches, what is working well for you? So that we can then take that and apply that to the others as well. And there's, I did have that piece, so it's a very important piece to have a teacher voice.
So I'm not sure if anyone's aware, but we, um, we set kind of a new precedent in this school district tonight. We decided that data really doesn't matter like it needs to and that we're willing to move forward and make decisions not based on data or data that supports moving forward. I think that's unfortunate. I'm extremely disappointed. Um, at the very least, that is our job as board members to actually take evidence and apply it and not bring personalities into a situation. You know, it's easy to personalize things and make, and shift it and blur the lines. That's not our job. Our job is to take evidence and make the best decisions of what we have. And this is what we teach our students. We teach them that data matters, evidence-based decisions matter, but we're making an exception for some reason. I'm not sure I understand why. Um, to your point, uh, Andrew, you had talked about giving it a year, uh, to see what happened. Um, I would ask you as a board member, as a fellow board member, did, when you voted for the first $400,000 of AIR services, did you picture in your mind that if they would only meet three out of nine goals, I would give them another $200,000? I would be pretty shocked that that's how you feel about that. Um, you know, we can, we can craft narratives to, to fit our, our needs on this, but what it comes back down to is we're giving an outside company over half a million dollars. We're not building relationships with this money, by the way. The sustainability in this professional development, um, personally should be part of, of the proposal. Going forward and saying that the priority is math and literacy, and by the way, what happened to math is, are we okay with that? I'm not sure how we are. Um, going forward, knowing the challenges in the school, I fundamentally disagree that, and this is coming from everyone that's ever talked to me that's been at that school that are frustrated. They don't come and say, if we only had better coaching for math and literacy, these kids could learn. I've never heard that. I continue to hear the investment needs to be courageous, it needs to be intense, it needs to, to, to be evidence-based. So if you think about it, as a board member, you have to turn around. If you vote against this, you're knowing that you are, you're listening to their voices, you're, you're making decisions based on evidence. I will never present to know everything about education. I don't. But what I do know is that we continue to have discussions district-wide about how to use data, how to apply concepts for our kids, what we're telling them what to do with this, but we don't apply it at the board table. If in any other business, organization in this world, I'm just going to say it, pitched 30%, they would not get more money. And we cannot continue to ask the state for more funding and cry around that mantra when we do not use what we do have responsibly. Again, this isn't anecdotal. I'm not going to throw people's names out there and say that they're this, that. My job is to look at evidence and data. You know, we, we employ an entire department around that, this school district, but tonight it doesn't matter. And I'm so confused by that and I'm extremely disappointed and frankly very frustrated and sad because now moving forward, if you bring me data, I'm going to massage it the way I need it to be and it's not going to be certain, it's not going to be the end-all. And that's, that is what we've always done. Tonight, that is not happening because three out of nine goals being met for $400,000 is $30,000 a month. We did not even get close to making this worthwhile. So maybe you can normalize this, you can go back to people and, and, but the big picture is this did not meet the mark and that is what's on the table. Thank you.
All right. Well, go ahead. Are you on topic, Andrew?
Um, I just wanted to add one more thing. So I, I had a conversation with the teacher who teaches at Washington today. And one of the things that really stuck with me is how sad she is about how her school is portrayed in, in the media and at this board table and in our community in general. Um, so I would like to challenge everyone in this room to tell the whole story about this school, or better still, stop portraying it as a failed school. It affects the mental health of the students, which she told me today, she hears some things from her students, they talk about their own school. As I know our school isn't very good, that's just not, that's how they, that's how they feel because it's portrayed constantly to them that way. It affects the mental health of our students and the teachers who teach them every day. And the steady stream of scrutiny, um, affects that learning community. It filters into our community and it becomes accepted truth when the real truth is just, it's not told. It's much more complex. Everyone knows that. Um, and I think it's a wonderful school that's working very hard to overcome its challenges. Um, much like other schools in this district and in the state and in this country. So please think of when you talk about our, this school publicly, how you're portraying it because it affects the people that work in that school every day. And, um, and I, I, I'm worried about that. That's all.
Andrew, did you have something?
Um, so maybe I, uh, for me, I think if, for me to know tonight, and, and perhaps I missed it, or and perhaps it's something that needs to be flushed out more specifically with, with AIR and that hasn't happened yet. Um, like I need to, I need to see what's different as far as other schools having more involvement in this. So I would say a school learning something through something that Judy has learned from AIR, that would happen whether there was a Washington-only focus to AIR or a broader involvement of other schools in AIR or, or UGA, right? So that's valuable, but that would happen even if we had it be a Washington-only program. So I need to know like how, how is that going to look different and do we need another, if that's under, we would need another week to know how, a little bit more of how that's going to look. I'm, I'm okay with that because I don't want to rush something like this. I also am wondering if there, if, again, is there any, do, do we need to take a bit more of a look at the, the issues brought up by the gentleman from EWGB because there, I, I think there might be enough, there may ain't be enough positives to outweigh a negative past for people who used to be there, but it's a, some pretty serious charges that came, uh, suddenly.
I think that we, um, given the circumstances, it would probably make more sense for the board to decline for the contract with AIR. The concerns we had related to the support for Washington were that, again, similar to what, what Ms. McCoy said, that if we continue to use Washington Middle School and attaching it to AIR as the reason for the controversy, the negativism, which has been part of the dialogue, is causing more damage than the good of the AIR proposal. So I'd like to, uh, I'm doing so in part from my opinion, not necessarily, uh, I defer to Dr. Langenfeld, but before we began the board meeting, we were in consideration of whether or not we could bring it forward. And we felt that continued controversy around Washington doesn't support Washington and we prefer to focus on solutions. And if AIR has been something that's come back month after month out of concern, if it's become the divisive issue, I'd rather focus on what are the solutions? And I, I really would like to know more from the board about what it sees as the changing courageous solution that we have not come up with yet because what we're looking at is going back to what we've done in past years. We've invested money, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars into additional staff, into trying to do things different, into looking at principals and feeling like they were not the person that we wanted and changing out the principal. So I would, I would ask that we give consideration to withdrawing the proposal until there's a different environment in which we're ready to hear what can be offered.
Thank you, John. I know that, um, we have engaged in this conversation very seriously and I talked to some members of the board about it. The piece that I would ask, and it continues to be, is that are we going to let Washington move forward? I think that that's our concern. Uh, we feel very strongly that if we take, if AIR, you know, we know that that's been an important investment for the school. There will be teachers who will find this very problematic. Um, more importantly, that goes back to what you said, if not this, this was meant to be an investment right now. I know that, um, the money is for 27 different coaching sessions in math and literacy. Um, and, and I share the concern that if we just focus on behavior, we will not be able to, I don't know who was here in the room that talked about their, their, I believe it's our attorney here who is a graduate and came through Washington. Did I misunderstand?
No, West.
Similar though in terms of opportunity. My point being is that this is an investment and if the board chooses to, to move forward with it, um, I think that, um, we would do a very good job with continuing that trajectory and supporting it. I have grave concerns and Joe, you, Laura, in the concerns of the trajectory around the conversation. And again, if it is a question of if this becomes and continues to be a place where, where people hang their hat all the time and, and put failing school in the same breath, um, it's not, it's not healthy. And it does go back to the children, yep, the staff, but the kids, the kids feel it, the kids see it and then nobody's worked as hard as Cindy and her team and the staff to change that. So I just put that out there and I, I, I agree with you, John, in that we've had that conversation and again, it's, it would be, I, I have grave concerns about, about pulling things away, um, without the investment. You know, sometimes the, the district and especially central office gets accused of keep changing, keep changing, keep changing. Yeah, it's, it's to keep moving forward because you do see movement progress. That's all.
Christine?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, I'm a little confused how we were now using words like negativism, controversy, failing school. I didn't hear anybody say that Washington was a failing school. What I, I heard in that conversation was we care about our students, we all agree we need support, the teachers need support, city's important, we care, we care, we care. I didn't hear it's a failing school at all. What I heard from this room was a consensus that we care deeply. What we're talking about is ideas on how we meet their need. So it's not an either or. It's not, it's an investment in AIR or it's nothing. We all agree that it needs an investment. So if AIR is not the investment that we think is going to get our students and our staff what they need, if it's not teacher-supported and student-centered and backed up by the data, then we take that investment and we go back to the drawing table and we say, what can we do differently? Because we are committed to your school, because we care about your school and because that is the central idea that brings us to this table. So in my opinion, I'm getting a little fired up here because this isn't negativism about Washington. Nobody's sitting here saying teachers and staff fail. I didn't say that. What I said was they should all be applauded for their work. What we're talking about is, is if AIR fulfilled their contract responsibilities and their duties and if we feel confident that they are going to be the continued leaders for this school, worth the investment of additional $216,000. If we do not spend that $216,000, I think we should, with AIR, I think we come back to the drawing table and say, what does that look like? Maybe we have a, we go to the teachers and say, what would you like to see if you're staffed and you're, and you have a low student-to-teacher ratio, right? That's, we don't need any more staff. What do they want? What do the teachers want? What do the parents want? So I don't know what that is because I'm not them and I would never sit up here and assume that I know what they need. But it's not an either or and I just want to make that very clear. The money is there. We are committed to Washington. The question on the table is, is AIR going to be the turnaround partner? Are they going to get us the results that we need?
I just want to clarify that I was relating the feelings of a teacher who's tired of the public narrative around this school. She works in that school, she deals with the students, she hears from them, she hears from parents and the narrative is negative. I don't, I think we'd be naive to think otherwise. We've had two-plus years of it and it's hurting that school, that learn, it's, it's hurting that learning environment. And I am not going to discount what that teacher's told me.
I'm not discounting you, Laura. I, I'm just saying that in this conversation, we all agree that Washington is a, is a great school that has great leadership and has good teachers. And that theme of, you know, it's not a good school crosscuts a lot of our schools. And so that is a culture that we need to overcome and demonstrate to our community. You're absolutely right. My point is just saying that was in this conversation, we're not, that's not where this is coming from. The conversation was centered around AIR. So I apologize if that, that wasn't directed at you, that was just a general observation. So thank you for that clarity.
Okay. I would echo everything that you discussed about negativity. The motion on the floor at the table is to approve another year with AIR services. And I'm using the information that I have available to me, which does include conversations with staff. Now I know that, um, superintendent mentioned that teachers will find this problematic. I did not hear from one of those teachers personally. And you would think if, if you're a teacher that wants this to pass, I'm a person you're going to reach out to, right? Let's be critical thinkers about this. You're going to reach out to me and you're going to let me know how much you support this. So if there's enough teachers in that building that think this is going to be problematic, I'm going to hear from at least one. And I haven't. Who I've heard from are the people that say, this is a waste of money. Who I've heard from are the people that say this is a waste of money, it's internal decay, those are the words that were used, and that we need more support in other areas. Again, very encouraged to hear the ideas that are happening there. Two things can be true. I support the additional services and everything that was discussed at the, this table tonight. But as a board member who has heard from a ton of people in that building, some people who do, who no longer work there, by the way, I'm interested in reality. It is my job not to decide if I like people or not, is to look at a proposal, the money invested, and make a decision with, with all of the evidence that I have in front of me. If I can't do this tonight and I'm just going to have thoughts and prayers, right? A lot of people in this room probably use that narrative and say, you know, school shootings, thoughts and prayers, you know, we don't believe in that. I don't either, actually, for the record. I believe in looking at concrete evidence, data-supported decision-making and the human piece of it. If I would have had teachers messaging me that they absolutely need another year of this, I wouldn't feel the way I do about this. But I have not heard that. And again, I would be a person you would reach out to. We all know this, sitting in this room. It would be me. You would want to, so I, 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 I can sit here tonight and I'm sure assured that the problematic negativity is not going to come from this not passing. There will be more of an outcry. There will be more people, hopefully it'll be more people lining up to run their school board personally. But there will be, the negativity will not decrease. I can guarantee you with this decision, if it passes. We have great ideas that we discussed tonight. One of those great ideas is not moving forward with this proposal. And the evidence tells you that story. Thank you.
I just wanna push back on that a little bit. Oh, sorry. So the teachers I talked to, um, who, who brought their concerns to me, um, I said, well, you know, do you feel like you would like to share them in an open session? And, um, they said no because they're afraid to come before the school board. And they're not afraid of, um, they're, they're afraid of how they will be portrayed. The last time we had, uh, teachers come to Washington Middle School to talk to us and to give their sincere concerns, um, they weren't treated very well. And they had threats and there was a lot of negativity. And that came up in my conversation today. And when I said, well, you're afraid of retaliation and, and they said, not from administrators. They're afraid of retaliation from school board members and they won't come. That's just what happened today. And so, yeah, you might, you might think that, um, you might think that teachers would feel free to reach out to school board members. But it's a lot more complicated than that and we all kinda know why. They were treated badly the first time. Why would they come again?
Okay, um, this is, so I, this is going in a kind of strange direction here and I very, I, I'm, I'm wondering now because, and I, I would have been, if, if I had the same kind of, um, if I heard, if I heard a strong negative opinion from staff that I went to, um, I would have been done talking about air a long time. I probably would have let the administration know that I wasn't in a place that I could support it, but that's not, that's not what I heard. But obviously there's some, you know, maybe some kind of a split here that I'm not aware of that I need to, to learn more. I think it's, to me, I think it would be reasonable to, and I, I know that this can't be, I know that this can't break out indefinitely. It can't be a lot, it can't be weeks, uh, but I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we postpone the vote on air until, um, the next board meeting, which is in one week. It would give time for some, for any remaining questions or, or feedback to be, to be gotten. And then, again, not with the, and I don't intend to make another motion to that effect again next week. I'll say that now. It's to give one week to